I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six thirty P. M. Would everyone rise to say the pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, DeFeeder. Would the secretary take the roll call, please?
Commissioner Perez-Benick.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Absent and excused.
Commissioner Turnbull, here. Commissioner Wallace, here. Commissioner Kalias, here. Commissioner T. B., here. Commissioner King, here.
Okay, next item is approval of the agenda. If someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion made and seconded. Any corrections or comments? Take your role, please.
Commissioner King, aye. Commissioner Turnbull, aye. Commissioner Kalias, aye. Commissioner Wallace, aye. Commissioner Perez-Benick, aye.
Aye. Next, we have approval of minutes from the regular meeting of June ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from June ninth.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes. There any comments or corrections? Hearing none, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Kalias, aye. Commissioner King, aye. Commissioner Wallace, aye. Commissioner Turnbull, aye. Commissioner Perez-Benick, aye.
Next item is public comments on non-agenda items only. If anyone's here who would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item, they can rise and come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on. We have no business items tonight. We have other business on the proposed rezoning of the O-one classification. We need to renew the draft report regarding the rezoning of sites previously zoned O-one or currently zoned O-one. So if, Mr. Ortega, would you like to start us off on that?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. As mentioned, and as you recall, part of the, one of the goals of the master plan was to remove reduced amount of zoning districts and at the same time provide more opportunities for property owners to have different types of tenants or uses on the property. So we have eliminated the O-one zoning district. So now the next step is to rezone the existing parcels from O-one to a current zoning district. So before you, there's a memo that identifies each site. There's twenty-six individual sites that are actually zoned O-one right now. And then this memo goes through, provides you with different information, you know, the existing use on the sites, their proposed future land use designation that's within the master plan, and then also the proposed recommended zoning district for that master plan designation. And then finally, may have proposed rezoning for that individual site. So generally speaking, most of the rezonings would follow with the non, future land use designation on the master plan. However, in some cases, I have suggested a rezoning that was, was more in keeping with the existing use. The point for that being, it's one approach. One of that approach for that is to minimize amount of creation of the legal nonconformities. Because, we'll go over it in a second, but if some uses are envisioned, sites are envisioned to be a different zoning district than those currently on the site, that would involve them, the use eventually ceasing. So the discussion before you tonight would be to see if, for each individual site as we go through, if you believe that's best course of action or if it's more appropriate to follow in, in direct and in line with the future land use designations. And each case has their own unique characteristics, that's why I thought it'd be good to have this little exercise. So going through, beginning, so there're basically four different areas within the city, and so I've outlined them for you. The first one being up on Merriman Road. You know, you have one site, sixty-nine eighty-five Merriman Road, that's currently a therapeutic facade. And then, so rezoning that to C-two would be in keeping with the master plan. However, the next issue is down at sixty-seven fifty-five Merriman. This is a, used to be a multi-tenant building, but now it's mainly utilized as a dentist office.
Uh.
Yes?
Can we, can we take these one at a time and see if?
Absolutely.
Anybody has any questions or comments on each one as we go through it, and then we won't have to go back and? Okay, so sixty-nine eighty-five Merriman, does anybody have any comments or questions on the proposed rezoning of the site? Okay, so everyone's in agreement with that? Yeah, let's move on to the next one.
Yeah, so sixty-seven fifty-five, that's at Merriman and Cambridge. It's a, you drive by past it, you might notice the one with the dentist sign that you carved out of the shrubs on the fronts. And so it's a very active site. And then on that same lot, oh, excuse me, for that site, it is home zones O-one right now, so it's legally conforming. So, but however, the master plan envisions that site going to single family. It didn't envision, the master plan doesn't envision more commercial coming down further south away from the Merriman Road and Warren intersection. So the master plan would say, rezone this to R-one. I'm, once again, the idea of not creating extensive amount of nonconformities by rezoning it to C-one. C-one is the lowest level of commercial intensity, of course, and it would be something that the dentist office would still be a permitted use of that district.
Okay.
So that's a.
Yeah, I think making it a, an existing nonconformity only creates more problems for us. And it's almost contiguous with the other commercial sites going up towards Warren. There's only the one block in between. So I think it's appropriate to go with the C-one in that particular spot. Any other comments?
I was just, I was thinking the same thing, that the further north you go, the more concentrated it gets, so it seems to be reasonable to me to do.
Yeah. And so everybody's in accordance with going with the C-one there?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So the next site on that same block, sixty-seven twenty-one Merriman, is the adjacent building which is that the model layer store is above. So similar situation is planned for R-one and recommended C-one for that, it's fair to reason that it's in closer proximity to that Warren-Merriman interchange of not creating that.
Yeah, I think the same logic applies to that one, since it's connected to the previous building anyway, so. Everyone in agreement on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the next two, if I may try, is sixty-two fifty-one and sixty-two thirty-seven. They're both single-family homes, and they're both right now zoned O-one. So right now, technically, the single-family house is legally nonconforming. So those property owners would not have the ability to expand their existing home with any type of addition in the current situation. The master plan says R-one, I also think R-one is best, and then that would make their homes legally conforming. So they could do, they would have all the rights associated with being a single-family homeowner in the city.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that. Anyone else? Everyone in? Okay. Yeah, I would agree with both of those.
So moving on to Millbell. So given the fact that we're doing, we're gonna have to do this massive amount of rezoning, I've taken the opportunity to also suggest making some corrections to the zoning. Because there's some, there's a, there's a couple, there's actually four different locations in which the zoning map doesn't reflect what is happening, what is currently on the site. And I think it's another, similar to the Arcola and Cherry Hill rezoning we just went through, where it was one property that had two, three different zoning designations on one lot. I think it's a holdover that might not have been corrected back in the day. So an example of this would be right at twenty-fourty-one Millbell Road. So that's basically, you know, the Proclean, the Proclean Building with all the multi-tenants. Technically, that building extends across three different lots. It's zoned, so it's planned in that for central business district, but a portion of that is closest to Millbell is planned, or excuse me, zoned, central business district. But then it goes down to C-two on a one lot. And then the rear lot, the parking lot, is actually zone R-three. And so it, it creates a problem because number one, you have a building where the zoning cuts through the middle of the building. So, and I, I think it's just an avenue of minor, that occurred back in the day. When they rezoned it to central business district, they might have cited the address of just one parcel, they forgot to pick up the other two. So in this case, I would recommend, you know, getting rid of those R-two and R-three, excuse me, getting rid of those other two zoning districts, just rezoning it to CBD. So that way, the property owner can have, one, his entire property can be one hundred one zoning renovations.
Okay. Everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I have to agree with that also. The other lot next to it, that seems to be kind of an island there. I'm not sure what the situation with that lot is.
Meaning the residential we are?
Yeah, there's a, there's a residential lot right next to that lot we're talking about changing.
Well, I would recommend both lots. So I, I probably didn't differentiate, but I did say two lots for twenty-fourty-one.
Oh, so it's just not colored properly?
Yeah, it's not colored correctly, so I can, well, actually, that's the issue, is that there are two, so technically, that site has three zoning designations. There's an R-three zoning designation, a C-three zoning designation, and a CBD. So it's those, it's those, those three need to be all.
Okay. Okay, you did note that it was two lots.
So I can, I can clarify that in a few years' time. I want to make sure that, so later, that there are two lots or two.
Okay, so we're all okay with that?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, we can move on then.
Okay. Seventeen fifteen Millbell Road, so just south of that site is the existing actress office. It is, once again, zoned O-one. It's proposed, so this Millbell Road corridor, everything is proposed as mixed use. Within the mixed use, it envisions either C-two, a new zoning district, or becoming part of planning development. It's because this mixed use, future land use category, is envisioned to be some type of, like I said, mix of commercial, residential, and that sort of thing. But to reflect the existing use and supported by the master plan, I'd suggest it be zoned C-two.
Why would you go to C-two instead of C-one there?
Uh, that's a possibility, I mean, you know, C-one would be a little bit more compatible with adjacent residences. I would assume only because the master plan recommended that C-two opportunity.
It's surrounded by residential.
Correct.
Zone, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, you know, that's another way to go as well, you know, because that is, because of the, you know, we want to be consistent with that policy we're taking to minimize amount of nonconformity. C-one would be more compatible.
C-one would be more compatible.
Because the issue with C-two will be that C-two districts allow for restaurants, mainly. The main difference between C-one and C-two is that restaurant category. And I will say that we do get a lot of business owners coming, excuse me, potential applicants coming to leave or to turn previous commercial sites into restaurants just because, you know, that's the easiest type of use, I guess, to consider with these type of restaurants. So, yeah, if it's only C-two, that would open up that opportunity for restaurants, but I don't know if that's compatible with.
Yeah, I, I, I think I would prefer C-one there. Does everyone agree with that?
I'd prefer C-one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, C-one.
Yeah, we'd like to go with C-one there.
I would. So then, my experience is, as we move on. So, on the other side, east side of Millbell Road, eighteen fifty-eight Millbell, right there in the corner of Millbell-John Hawke, that's the XLRC store. It's planned as mixed use, recommend C-two, so right now, I'm proposing C-two. I'm not sure how your opinion is on that.
That existing use wouldn't fit in with the C-one?
It would.
What does everybody else think about that?
I think it's often a type of residence next to the, C-one is a couple of people that want to go there.
Well, maybe we should talk about that one at the same time, because it looks like, Mario, that's also C-two.
Correct. So the adjacent lot to the east, twenty-nine two thirty-three John Hawke, so that's right now a single-family home. So right now, it's already legally nonconforming. And I believe the idea back then, rezoning to O-one was probably to, so we'd have a larger site available for redevelopment. So at this time, I was just thinking C-two might work to be consistent with that lot, because then.
Well, I'm not feeling was at that time, because that was the post office, or the post office, or the government thought they needed expansion at some point. I think it'd be more appropriate to take it back to R-one personally, but what does everybody? Yeah, the John Hawke site.
And then eighteen just.
The other one would.
Down the twenty-nine two thirty-three.
Mm-hmm.
I think, single-family home would be having, as far as the mix signal, funny about stuff like that when you do a title search on the whole.
This commercial.
R-one is R-one, and it's a house in the neighborhood.
If I may, it brings up a good point. Going through this exercise, one other thing I found is, and I've experienced, is we do have single-family homes that have a current designation, and make them legally nonconforming. So that impacts in two main ways. One, it limits their ability to expand on the house, do any addition. Now, being legally nonconforming, it can be bought and sold, it can be maintained, and that sort of thing, but it just can't be expanded. The other main way that also impacts single-family homes is that it, when a, if they attempt to refinance, if the mortgage company contacts me, they typically ask, can it be reconstructed if it was destroyed? Are not, all nonconforming ordinances normally say, if a structure is nonconforming and gets destroyed, it can only be rebuilt for a conforming use. So what happens with the homeowner is that, that somebody, if the home was destroyed, it couldn't be built a home. Now, most communities also have a stipulation that does say legally nonconforming single-family homes can be rebuilt. So that, therefore, it doesn't, that nonconforming stipulation doesn't attack, isn't required for single-family homes. It's required of commercial businesses to make sure they conform and can be rebuilt. But it would allow single-family homes to be rebuilt if that ordinance was amended. And so one day, as I mentioned, it's something that's brought up, because we don't have that currently. So I was going to recommend, as part of our upcoming zoning ordinance amendments, to make sure that legally nonconforming, single-family homes can be rebuilt, no matter the level of description, like a flood or tornadoes. So it's just a piece of information I would give.
Okay, well, I think to avoid issues on this and to make it more compatible with the neighborhood, I think that John Hawke address should go to R-one.
Okay.
And then the other one, C-one.
Okay. So moving on, on that lot, just to south of there is a old estate building, which is now an office building. And that's C-two. And then seventeen forty Millbell is the Sonic Lodge. It's also planned for mixed use, and the corresponding zoning district would be C-two, so that's why I recommend C-two. But once again, if you wanted to possibly build C-one in the Sonic, I think that would check to make sure that it would be allowed in C-one, I think we'll be sure.
Have we had a lot of interest in that area? I know there's a few coachable places for sale. Have we been getting a lot of interest for restaurants, stuff that would require a C-two or a C-one?
Not in that corridor, no. I think most people probably are aware that that's corridor that isn't for that higher intensity use of like a restaurant. We typically have those restaurant certifications in your normal quarters, Angster, forward, Millbell North of Warren Road, and, you know, at Warren Road intersection, and that sort of thing. So people really have, and then, yeah, people really have thought about that, in the Millbell corridor. So, well, excuse me, just to let you know, if you did want that Sonic Lodge to be a C-one, then it would be a permitted use, so it would be legally nonconforming in C-one, excuse me. Is there a permit?
Yeah, I, well, personally, I think C-one is the better fit for that area, but what does everybody think?
I'm leaning on C-one on that one, just because of the adjacent home.
Yeah, there's, there's a house right next to it, and it backs up to more residential property also, so.
I just want to make the whole C-one?
Yeah. Yeah, from, from the Methonic Lodge down to John Hawke, I think that C-one's appropriate for all of that, as long as that the current use fits the, the category.
So, so then, the Sonic Lodge would be C-one, directly south of that is a single-family home.
Right.
So the lot configuration on this map isn't updated. So that's at John, Millbell block, so basically, that home that fronts on Millbell. They merge their two lots, and then it'll combination join, that's where they build those two houses.
Yeah.
So that's why, to the rear of it, it's still single-family. So, but right now, the original house that fronts on Millbell is still zoned O-one, that frontage part of the home.
And what is the vacant lot next to it? Is that also a way, O-one?
Uh, O-one, yes.
Yeah.
So in this case, you know, once again, first I just went with the master plan, the rest is designation, but to be consistent, you might want to make that R-one as well.
They were talking about when they built those other two houses, about turning that into some kind of commercial property. And nothing ever happened. Of course, they didn't even finish the houses, so.
Correct.
Uh, I guess maybe we shouldn't be too concerned with that. Uh, well, to be. To make it, to not make it a nonconforming use, do we want to go with R-one, or do we want to just step it up to a C-one? Do you think R-one's, well, that's most appropriate, and if.
If somebody wants to change, if, if somebody has an interest in a business, they can come in for us. They can apply for a wonderful point of view on there. We're guessing out of businesses now, that we should kind of maybe lock up these residential's and keep them residential's.
Mm-hmm.
And then ask the commercial people, want to come in, if they want to come in. We could take that nonconforming out of the book right now, and then we'll just.
Yeah.
If somebody wants to change, it could come out, yes.
Okay, let's go with R-one there.
Yeah. So then, moving on, directly south of that, south side of that, at sixteen fifty-eight is a dentist office. And it is adjacent to single-family homes. Right now, I was thinking C-two, but I wasn't sure.
Well, yeah, I.
To be consistent?
I think to be consistent with the other ones in that section, if we go to C-one, that's Medical and Dental Clinic, will fit in. Everyone agree with that?
I agree.
So we came down to similar situation, then, we jump down to Hanipin and Millbell. The lot fronting twelve forty-four Millbell is another, is a doctor's office. Whereas the lot behind it, twenty-nine two thirty-five, is a single-family home. Originally, I was proposing C-two, just to be consistent with the master plan, but it's similar to me, that seemed like the same situation we had, you know, just a minute ago on John Hawke. So if you wanted to make twelve forty-four C-one and twenty-nine two thirty-five R-one?
Yeah.
Yeah. So then, we have a kind of unique situation, directly south of there, at twelve fifty-eight Millbell. So this is another situation where for some reason, it was probably zoned single-family the entire time. And, but for some reason, the O-one, a lot in the middle of the site, which is the church, was zoned O-one. So there's, there's like a vacant piece property that's part of the church, it's the same lot. And then the church building itself is actually zoned O-one. And then its parking lot to the south of that is zoned R-one again. And then actually, part of it is zoned R-three. So like that entire.
Which part of it's R-three?
It's, uh.
The further south?
Further south, that's still a part of their property.
Oh, okay.
So their, their property, in this case, their property has four different, or three different zoning designations, excuse me.
Well, our, our church is allowed in R-three as well as R-one?
So they are allowed in R-three, so that's why I thought that might be appropriate, if you wanted to. The other way, it could be.
That would make everything from Marquette on down to the medical office, the thing. It would all be R-three then.
Yes.
So every, what does everybody think?
Make that entire thing R-three.
Yeah.
And the church would make, would have this entire site be legally conforming.
Yeah.
They would have no issues with any type of project they might have.
Right. So if somebody, when somebody looks at this property, you know, or anything that might raise an eyebrow, that makes them a little nervous.
Correct.
Perception is a funny thing.
Okay, well, are we talking about the other two lots, changing them, as well as the church?
Correct.
Okay.
So then, as you mentioned there, so everything from Marquette to the southern boundary of the dentist office would be R-three.
Okay.
Moving on to Cherry Hill, right, Cherry Hill, Henry Ralph, there's a dentist office. It's, uh, you know, I'm just recommending C-one, because that, C-one on that corridor is appropriate, it'll obviously have homes there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that sounds right.
Moving over, Cherry Hill, at East, closer to Angster, between Cardinal and Belton, there is actually another dentist office. Recommend C-one for that as well.
Okay.
And then this is another instance in which there's a quirk in the zoning map, I was looking to correct it. So as I mentioned, we, we are, we are already correcting the Arcola and Cherry Hill site, that's all R-three. Directly next to it is Wendy's. For some reason, the front part of Wendy's and the drive-through of Wendy's is zoned R-three. I have no idea. I think it's just a matter of the way the lots were back in the day, and they might have just not cited, they might not have captured all the lots when they rezoned them. Because they definitely rezoned it to R-three, it's a C-three, which permits drive-throughs. It's just that they only got two of the. It's just that they only got two of the lots instead of four.
Yeah, they didn't complete the job.
They didn't complete the job.
Yeah.
They did other things, like they combined all the lots, because it is one unique site, one comprehensive site. There's even things like technically, see that little stuff that goes into the site that's white?
Yeah.
That's a, that's an old right wing. It's probably like an alley right wing or something, they never abandoned. I don't, I'm not, wasn't correcting that right now, but it seems, I'm just suggesting we might go clean up the map, make Wendy's all C3, because it already...
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
So then, directly north of them is a retail clothing store. The frontage on Inster is C3, but the back part of the building, the back part of the parking lot, is still R3.
Hmm.
I'm just correct, uh, excuse me. Yeah, it's R3 in the back and it's C3 in the front. I'm suggesting making it C1 for the entire site, because it's retail and everything adjacent to it on the north of it is also C1.
Okay.
So the entire block on Inster would then be C1. It would, it would be legally not conforming on the entire site and they would have no problems with any kind of expansions under the, for the current use. And then our last road, Inster. Starting at...
Before we go on, I had one question about, that appears to be a C3 right on Cherry Hill at Arcola. Is that what?
That's what we just corrected.
Oh, that just hasn't changed on this map?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we will be updating the zoning map, I just didn't have a chance to update this particular one. But yeah, that one is now all R3.
Okay.
So finally, Inster, we have another dentist office at 1769.
Okay, before we go on, there's a mistake on the map here. Uh, that street is not John Hawk, it's Bach.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, John Hawk is the north side of that block. Correct, something like that. So we have Bach. So once again, 1769 Inster, that's the dentist office, recommend that goes C1. That's R3.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it affects anything else here. All these are Inster Road addresses.
Yes. And then directly adjacent on the south side of the dentist office is multi-tentative building. They have three different addresses, but it's one building. It's got dentist salon and insurance sales office. And just recommend that goes C1 as well.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're beginning a theme here because Inster, majority of it is residential and lower than intensive commercial, except for the couple of locations. So at 1647 Inster, that doctor's office, I'm suggesting that we C1 as well.
Okay.
1501 Inster, for some reason, a portion of their lot, majority of it is R1, but a small sliver is O1, so I'm suggesting the entire 1501 become a single family, R1.
Now, that lot is north of Fantou's home?
Correct.
Okay, right.
Yeah, it's, it's an actual house separate, not part of the Santu funeral home or part of Santu house.
Yeah, okay. So we would, we would change that sliver down to R1?
Correct.
Okay. Everybody good there?
So then, 1290 Inster Road, it is a single family home, is part of leaving his own by an operator, owned by, and acted by by Mr. Fantou's son. And it's currently O1. I went with C1 only because to make it consistent with the zoning of the funeral home site.
Mm-hmm.
In case they need to expand or want to do something like that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, for your case where maybe, even though, because it wouldn't negatively impact site anymore than R1 is, because it already is legally not conforming, they can still do what they want with it.
Yeah. There's another house that they rent on that property too.
Yeah.
Yeah, to be non-conforming.
Right, but they have no problems with rental, actually, well maintained. I just thought, in this case, they might appreciate the opportunities of C1 like you.
To be fair, I see R1. So you're talking about 1501 Inster Road?
1201.
Oh, okay, thank you.
There's a home on there and actually, I think they have a farm as well.
Yeah, there's one son farms part of the property.
Yeah.
They have 17 acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, going to build some kind of cluster condos there.
Right.
And I guess that project never happened, so.
No, but the master plan does allow for mixed use in that, in their entire 17 acres. So if they ever decide to go forward with that or something else, the master plan would support any kind of project.
Okay.
But in this instance, so moving on to the actual funeral home site, 1311 Inster, I recommend that we just go to C1. And they would be a permitted use in the C1 district.
1139.
Yes.
Everybody good on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then 1061 Inster, while it looks like a home, it is actually an insurance office. So I was recommending going to C1 for that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's been converted.
And then, south of that, it's a one building with two addresses, 1035 and 1049 Inster. We have two attorneys out in there, maybe one, but I recommend going to C1 for that as well.
And that would be a permitted use?
Correct. So finally, at 1021, not finally, second to last, 1021 Inster, that's actually a single family home. It's located between the Chinese restaurant and the Chinese office. I just went with C1 because to make that entire block C1, technically would make them, would maintain their legal conformity. So I don't know if you want to go for R1 for them or...
Well, I mean, they're right in the middle of a commercial strip there, so, and they've, they've been zoned office up until now, so it's not going to really change anything for them. At some point, they may want to convert that into a commercial use.
And if you amend the zoning ordinance to allow for non-conforming single homes to be built, then actually they wouldn't have that, they'd have a lot of different opportunities. They could maintain the house or they can convert the site to commercial.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, what does everybody think about that?
I agree with C1.
Yeah, good. Yeah, okay, yeah.
And then finally, one last tweak of the map, just to give the Chinese restaurant a bit more development opportunities. They, part of their property is owned parking district, P1. I was suggesting just making that C1 because that actual delineation of that zoning districts goes to the edge of their building as well. Some part of their building is, is part of that parking.
Oh, okay.
So this would just clean up, clean up the site, give them the next...
Yeah.
For the...
Everyone good with that?
All right.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that's it. So I have you recommended changes mainly on Middledale, I'll kind of make those, just to let you know initially, we were thinking it might be possible to do these all at once. However, when I review the, I'll be reviewing the state section for the further, it will require us to do individual notifications for each property. What we'll be doing is, in the interim, we'll have, we're going to contact each property owner, make them aware of the situation, then discuss it, and then if those change, and then provided they're, they don't have any, you know, stronger, strong criticism or, or, you know, to, to the proposed zoning, we then, then go back to you to suggest home to hold here, probably.
Okay, do we have to have separate public hearings for each?
That still being determined? Hopefully not. But it might be, yeah, hopefully not.
Oh, yeah.
But I think if we scheduled them all at the same time, we'd be able to do it within one public hearing.
We made most of them what they already are, so we shouldn't get too much kickback.
Yeah, yeah, we...
There's really only two residences that might, I mean, I would think if there was going to be something bad, if you're not going R1 of the two houses, that we just make C1. That would be my guess.
But they, they've been living as an O1.
Right.
So it's not going to impact...
Well, that's a change for the worse. I, I honestly believe that's a change for the better than it just did.
Yeah, I think so too.
So...
Okay, well, we can't do anything about scheduling public hearings?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
But I will, will let you know, the, the Herd Act, well, communicated a lot of property owners, and let you know when we're ready to move forward with the public hearing.
All right then.
It'll take a lot of months, so we might be doing it September or October or something.
Okay, well, not a huge rush on that, I guess, but just want to get it done. All right, moving on to the next item, Commissioner's comments regarding planning and zoning matters. Commissioner, please.
I don't have a question.
No?
No.
No?
I just have one question. I've heard in neighboring committee, communities where investors are buying properties, turning them into Airbnbs, people are renting them, having parties, that sort of thing. Had we addressed that in the ordinances anywhere or...
We haven't. Every now and then I do monitor the situation meeting, I just go on Airbnb or VBRO and see how many are in the city. At most, I've seen like eighty-three or forty, so it doesn't seem to be that big of an issue. One, one, one thing that might be impacting our ability to regulate, that we went through the process of creating the ordinance, is the fact that the state legislature keeps attempting to be swayed by the, actively swayed by the lobbyists to, to say that local communities could no longer regulate Airbnb's. Or what they, the term, we call them the short-term rentals. So a lot, they actually have, several communities have, excuse me, several senators have brought up the idea of taking that power away from the local districts because they think that the short-term rentals need to be impacted, they have interest or something like that. They've, several times, they've been attempting to adopt a legislation, but it's never gone all the way through. The last time, it actually has gone, legally was adopted by the Senate, and it's, but it's still in committee in the House. So that's far as this has ever gotten. Usually, it was always stuck in committees. But having said that, if you ever wanted to regulate them, you know, it's something that you could, we could discuss, you know, with regards to the issues that come, come in. There's two trains of thought. One is, in certain locations, they shouldn't be available short-term rentals because they're going to negatively impact the adjacent residences. Usually, that's on smaller lots. The other is maybe just not regulating them and allowing the normal ordinances to govern their activity. Because, you know, when you think about it, whether someone, when they, when someone has a lot of parties or something that affects the neighborhood, or they have a lot of cars parked at their site, you know, typically, that's not always from short-term rentals. Sometimes that's for people that have, you know, month, year, year-long leases. Sometimes it's when the actual property owners, property owners, you know, most of the...
Situation the party sees, they sell.
Yeah.
Exactly, that kind of thing. And so that's the reason why we have our, our regular ordinances, which regulate, you know, noise and technically, there are restrictions on parking, what, how many they can impact, impact or have on their site. So some communities choose to go that way and just monitor and strictly enforce their current regulations of noise and such. Others do decide to adopt specific short-term rental ordinances. So we could do one or the other.
I understand that Airbnb put a moratorium on their party rentals because they were having problems.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, you know, they typically don't like it either, I guess.
I think it's because they also too, in fact, is that in some communities where they, they have them strictly regulated, they want to try and, try and weigh, you know, deal with issues before a community actually puts string, string, more stringent regulation.
Mm-hmm.
Because usually, you know, usually you get a more like late-front communities, they're the ones that are a little more apt to the negative impacts and then they, they're also the ones that come, kind of coming down hard on the regulations.
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like we're not getting any residents that have been bringing any concerns to light, so.
No, I haven't heard of that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Eric?
No, I'm good.
Brian?
Um, yeah, just two things. I don't know if this is how covered of the Airbnb thing, if we, we have standing on this, but there is, we do have an ordinance, it's 153, like, zero eight, rental or lease time limit. And it says it shall be unlawful for an owner to rent or lease a dwelling for a time period less than ninety days at a time. So I don't know if that kind of forces up a linkage to kind of limit the Airbnbs because unless you get somebody who's very interested in renting, you know, a place for three months.
Typically, I think they're shorter than that.
Right, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, so I, I don't know if that's what we, if a resident, you know, was concerned by, I was next to, of doing these short-term rentals, if that could be our fallback on it, that it is, you know, that's, it's relatively new. It was passed in February of last year.
Hmm.
But, so it could be something that if we do start getting all the concerns that we can cite, we can't do it. So, the other thing I had was I will have hard copies of chapter 154 for all the commissioners at the next meeting. Diane updated your flash drive. Does anyone else, and I knew you just want a hard copy. Anyone else want a hard copy and a flash drive for next?
No, just the hard copies, good for me.
Just hard copy?
Yeah.
All right, so just, okay. So then I will just get hard copies for everybody and we'll have those for next meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mario?
Uh, just working on the zoning ordinance amendments we talked about last night, and parking mainly right now. So I'm hoping to have some draft language review again as well.
Okay, then. Uh, I don't have anything, so if someone cares to make a motion, we can adjourn the meeting. Motion is made, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.